Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-five through January two thousand and twenty-six. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice of the adoption of said resolution was published in the January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has also been posted up to the municipal website, Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after the applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of their time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you please take the ball?
Certainly. Mr. Bodikheimer.
Here.
Ms. Capizoli.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mayor Frida.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Ms. Nuka. Ms. Perlmutter.
Here.
Mr. Taylor. Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Just for the record, we have a number of ten members of the public joining us tonight. And we're going to start off with the swearing in of a member of the Planning Board. So Jerry, would you take it away?
Yes. Claudia, if you could raise your right hand. Now Claudia was sworn in previously, which I think was probably sufficient, but she was sworn in as a class four member and she's an alternate too. So we're gonna, just to be cautious, we're gonna re swear her in. So Claudia, if you can raise your right hand and you have the form?
Yes.
Okay, if you can read that and when you get to Princeton Planning Board, you know what to say.
I, Claudia Wilson Anderson, sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in the state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of alternate to Princeton Planning Board according to the best of my ability and understanding.
Thank you. Sworn in. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Claudia. Thank you for going through that again. Appreciate it. Announcements. Justin, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you Chairman, and good evening, members of the board, members of the public. I've kept the board updated about the state development and redevelopment plan that's underway. So I just wanted to give another update on that. I attended the county, the meeting in our county on Tuesday night or Wednesday night. I honestly can't remember this week. The state is holding a meeting in every county between last week and April sixteenth. If you're interested in finding out more about the plan, the meeting I attended included about a thirty-minute presentation about the plan of which the document is online, followed by a time just for public comment to go into the record. But also you can comment on the plan either by emailing or there's a website set up as well. But if you're interested in finding out more about the plan of, you know, by having it presented rather than necessarily reading the whole thing, you can certainly attend one of those other meetings. I think there's probably sixteen left by that April sixteenth date. There's a schedule online and although they are one in each county, it really was not super county specific. So if you wanted to go up to Hundred End or over to Ocean County or wherever, you still can do that. There's no action needed from the board either as a group or individually on the state development and redevelopment plan, but they are accepting those comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Jerry, I believe you have a brief legal update for us.
Yes, as the board knows and I expect certain some members of the public know, there's been a suit which has been going on for a while where there's been a challenge by Princeton Coalition for Responsible Development challenging the master plan that was adopted by the, by the board in two thousand and twenty-three. There was a second suit also brought by Princeton Coalition for Responsible Development challenging the redevelopment plan which came out of proceedings before council. But it did come before the Planning Board for a decision as to whether it was consistent with the master plan and the board gave some review on that and advised council that they thought it was. So that's out there. Quite recently, the Princeton Coalition for Responsible Development filed a motion asking that the two cases be consolidated as well as requesting the right to undertake discovery in the redevelopment plan suit. The attorneys for the municipality, Steve Melanick, and for the Planning Board, that's Joe Marzidi in the redevelopment suit and me in the master plan suit basically opposed the motion arguing that certainly with respect to the Planning Board, consolidating the two cases would just would not accomplish nothing. It would be lead to a chaotic situation where there would be much more expenditure of resources by the municipality through the Planning Board without any advantage. And the court a couple of days ago granted, denied that motion and issued an opinion doing so. So that was a nice victory that we had there, but the suit is still there, but at least we're not stuck in a consolidated case where we would have undoubtedly been required to do a lot more than we have to do now.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. That's, that's good news. So we'll, we'll keep the rest of the board updated as further matters transpire.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other announcements from any board members or staff? Not seeing any. Let's go on to subcommittee reports. So the roster of subcommittees was distributed on February seventh and we have one report for the Site Plan Committee from Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thanks, Alvin. So the Site Plan Committee met yesterday to consider an application at eight oh five Bun Drive. It was in addition to an office research building, about eighty-five hundred square feet addition. And we had a fair bit of conversation about it, discussion about it, but wound up agreeing that it does qualify as a minor subdivision and it had no variances. So we recommend to the chair that the application be approved as a minor site plan.
Great, thank you. Not sure if I'm supposed to say so be it or.
I think Jean-Luc Picard would say make it so.
Make it so. That's good. Well, thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports? I don't believe that we've had any other meetings so far. So again, not seeing any. We'll move on to our application for tonight. The application tonight is from King Interests LLC. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances located at three thirty-eight and three forty-two Nassau Street, block number thirty-four point oh one, lots fourteen and thirty-two. File number is P two four two four dash four seven three P. And there's an MLUL deadline of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five on this.
Mr. Vice Chair, publication and service are in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Alvin, I see your hand up.
Yeah. I have a question before we start. It's sort of a procedural question. Again, reading through the materials for tonight, there is an objection from the Historic Commission. And it's a rather strong objection from them. So I just want to know how are we proceeding? Are we gonna hear this? Then maybe send it back to the Historic Commission? And then if you do that, does it come back here? Does it come back here again? There was some indication, I know that, that somehow they were, there was someone that was thinking that maybe this was also a concept review that we're gonna have tonight and it's not. So, so how are we, how are we proceeding? Should it, or should it just be?
Thank you very much for that question. That's an excellent question and I'm sure Justin will have more to say on this in his opening statement. But we are treating this as an application at this point. And Mr. Kennedy and Justin will elaborate on that further. So with no other questions, I'll throw the ball over to Justin for swearing in and, and his comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
If you could raise your right hand. Do we have other staff members here? I swear you're all in.
Yes, we should.
Who else?
We have Dan Derrick, Elizabeth, Victor, and Dan Dobremilsky.
Okay, if you all raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth? Just want to affirm, if you could just state your name for the record.
Justin Lesko.
Dan Weisman.
Victor Anasika.
Dan Dobremilsky.
Derek.
Derek Bridger.
And Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Kim.
Thank you all.
And thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Alvin. I will definitely touch upon that towards the end of my brief introduction. But this is a, this was filed as a major site plan application, so we're gonna review it as that. And then I'll get into what it means that the HPC did not recommend approval of the application and in very in their own terms and in your terms and in a very strong way, they did not recommend approval of the application. But to begin, I will start by showing the NJ map publicly available from Rowan University. NJ map parcel explorer and Jerry, we call this PB one.
Yes.
This is showing the two parcels in blue are the subject parcels. As the chair said, at three thirty-eight and three forty-two Nassau Street. Both parcels are in the RO residence office zone of the former borough. They are also in the affordable housing overlay to AHO two, though that is not being used for this application. Both parcels are also in the Jugtown Historic District, which is a locally designated historic district as well as on the state and national registers of historic places. The buildings on each parcel are also identified as contributing to the Jugtown Historic District. The front portions of each property are also located in the Kings Highway Historic District on the state and national register. The NJ Transit six oh six bus runs in front of the subject properties and turns up Nassau Street and the Free Princeton Muti Bus follows a similar route. There's no on-street parking in the vicinity of the properties. So then speaking about each of them, three forty-two Nassau is on the corner of North Harrison Street and Nassau Street. There's a two-story building on site that most recently housed an interior design firm. The building dates to seventeen thirty. A one-story addition is on the west side of the building and previously was on the east side of the building, but was moved in the nineteen forties when Harrison Street was widened. The lot is point one three six acres in area and contains a seven-space gravel parking area in the rear. The building was renovated in twenty fifteen or as a result of a twenty fifteen approval, which included the change to its present day look of a dark gray facade with black elements from the white paint, red shutters and green roof that were previously on the building. There are small green areas that are heavily landscaped and two flowering dogwood trees in the rear around a brick pathway. And thirty-five European hornbeams were planted after the twenty fifteen approval as a buffer between the gravel parking area and the adjacent property at three thirty-eight Nassau. So moving on to that three thirty-eight Nassau, it is the white building to the west of three forty-two Nassau. There's a two-story building on it dating to the eighteen hundreds and it's accessed by a driveway off Nassau Street that leads into a thirteen-space gravel parking lot behind the building. In twenty eighteen, the zoning board granted approvals for a rear addition, partial demolition and restoration on the three thirty-eight Nassau building. The application before you tonight does not mention any changes to that building. However, it contain, the application would connect the parking lots between three thirty-eight and three forty-two Nassau and create something of a courtyard between them, really designed around a new fountain that would be put in there. The thirty-five European hornbeams would be removed. The lots would remain gravel and there would be a net loss of one parking space between the sites. The driveway on North Harrison Street would be moved twenty-seven feet away from the intersection, so to the north essentially. And that would be a two-way driveway as it is now, but the only ingress for both of the lots. The existing driveway on Nassau Street would go from two-way as it is now to one-way and that would be out only. So the building, going back to the corner of the building, the building at three forty-two Nassau Street would be renovated and repainted back to white. The roof would be replaced in kind and repainted gray. The porch would be replaced and the shutters door and trim would be repainted green. Air conditioning units will be moved to the west of the existing wing with an enclosure around them and a five hundred and eighteen square foot addition is proposed to the rear of the three forty-two Nassau building. It would not be visible from Nassau Street, but it would be very visible from North Harrison Street being on the corner. The proposed addition includes faux historic features like faux carriage doors and roof brackets and it would blend in with the historic building by using the same white paint and gray roof. There are other details like bike parking pavers and trash locations that I won't get into at this time. But just to cut to the chase, as we heard previously, I would recommend that this application be denied by the board or redesigned by the applicant to better align with the municipality's historic preservation requirements and the zoning ordinance, as there are several variances being requested that seem like they could be eliminated or minimized while also resulting in a better building. There are also safety concerns regarding the ingress and egress and how they affect the North Harrison and Nassau intersection. I have other smaller comments in my report, but I'll hold them for now based on that kinda, you know, bigger one right there. But before I get to that, I do want to address Alvin's question. And just note that the HPC reviewed the application at their December meeting. They did not support the application and strongly recommended that the board deny it per the municipal historic preservation ordinance. If the board chose to approve this application tonight, you would need to state on the record the reasons that you were disregarding the HPC's recommendations. So it would be a full application as it always is and just with that caveat that if you did want to approve it, you would have to state those reasons. All that being said, Mr. Bridger, yes.
Just jump in for a second with respect to Alvin's question. If the advice of Justin is taken, the board denies the application, nothing would happen at that point and it would be up to the applicant to decide whether they want to make revisions and come back to the board and the HPC. They will always have the right of appealing. If it's, if it's granted and the board is, as Justin said, they'd have to state their reason for the record, on the record as to why, and that would be the end of that because it would be an approval.
Thank you, Jerry. That is basically all I have for this intro. I'm happy to go into any of those, you know, other items. If you wanna talk about the bike parking or if you wanna talk about, there are some other things like glossed over like trash and, and things like that. But I think the applicant will cover them. Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman are here to speak to their engineering and zoning report. Mr. Anasika is here with his traffic engineering report. Mr. Dobremilsky has his landscape architecture report. And all of these and the Princeton Environmental Commission's report were in your packet that was sent out last week. Since then, we've also received reports from the Shade Tree Commission and the HPC. Member Capizoli, I think, can provide her report from the HPC, you know, based on her other role as the chair of the commission. And Ms. Kim is also here to answer any questions on that report. So at this time, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Julie, would you like to provide an overview of the HPC report since this is so vital to this hearing?
Sure. Well, if you go to the report, it's pretty much the comments start on page five. And so we, and I would definitely also want to hear Elizabeth's comments as well, but you know, we're concerned about the significance of the building being from seventeen thirty, being preserved as well as it is, having a significant role in the town that we would not want alterations that would obscure the original significance of the building. We did not like the idea of the front steps being reclad and reworked. We were definitely concerned about the location of the new structure being so close to the street and felt that it should be set back further. We were looking at the Secretary of the Interior standards regarding historic looking items on the building. And you know, the concern is that we don't want to try to, you know, fool anyone that this is a historic building and it should stand separately from the original building and not detract from it. So there's, that's in point four. Point five is that the features on the building were not relating well to the original structure. We are definitely, number six is we're concerned about the demolition of the the exterior rear wall of the building for various reasons and Elizabeth can get into that. Seven is about the porch work and how that is also compromising the integrity of the building. And so, let's see, eight is that again, the being so close to the right of way we felt was inappropriate and kind of obscured the the significance of the seventeen thirties building. We did not feel the new plaza with the fountain was really appropriate with this structure and that it was more of a commercial appearance and that the pavers were quite large and out of scale. Then there were also questions about the, especially the fenestration. There were concerns that it didn't really relate to anything and that let's see, I think twelve is that the foundation planting looks more suburban and isn't really appropriate. The let's see, the hornbeam trees, we were sad to see those go because they're fairly well-developed. And you know, add, add greenery to the site. And then fourteen was that we really encouraged a concept review because concept reviews are free and they're available and a lot of information can be exchanged and advice and guidance and so we still stand by that, that a concept review would be a fantastic next move. Elizabeth, did you want to add anything? Is she, is she there?
Yeah.
Oh. I think you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you're fine.
Right. So just to add to what Julie had said, I think the first thing is that HPC felt that the applicant did not actually understand the history of the building, which was very important to how they approached the design of the project. And they felt that if there had been some knowledge of the history, they had done the research and was familiar and why it was so important that they might have approached it differently. But they didn't see any effort or accommodation to the Princeton history or the validation of the original building or anything related to the context of the streetscape. So because they didn't see that, they felt that their approach to the design was not sympathetic to the history of the building. So that they had concerns with appropriate scale proportions, the placement of the addition, some of the site amenities, the features, the material, all the things that Julie touched on in addition to landscape and streetscape. Again, the placement of the building, they felt that it should be set back because it's important for the historic building to be prominent on the streetscape. And they felt that it was really too close to the sidewalk and even though it didn't have a high profile and they had no problem with the size or footprint of it just because it was so close to the street that it took away from the significance of the building. And there was an opportunity, there was room and they felt that the applicant should revisit that. And just the approach of the way they designed, they did not meet the Princeton Historic Preservation Ordinance, just even by the approach of the front porch. You start with repair. If you need to replace, it's replacement in kind. But they took a wood porch and they made an masonry porch with metal railings. So but to that end, I would say that the applicant did agree that they would replace the porch by repairing and then in kind. In addition, they did say that they were willing to keep as many of the hornbeam as possible that weren't in the connecting access drive or within the hardscape, which was their crosswalk. So that was good to hear. They also had talked about that they would like to consider moving the AC unit which is facing North Harrison Street. So it's out of the view shed and they will put it on the west side. So there were concessions that were done, which HPC did appreciate, but overall they felt that it was really not sympathetically done to a very important building within a very important intersection of Jugtown.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kim. Before we move on to, to the applicant, do any of the, yes, David, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I just, you know, I totally support the conclusions of HPC, but I wanted to ask a little clarifying question because the use of the term faux historic as part of the criticism of the addition. I know that our local, our, as opposed to the Secretary of Interior standards, I think our local Historic Preservation Ordinance tries to pretty strongly say that we don't want to prescribe stylistic choices to an owner. And so, you know, if an applicant wants to do something in a historical style, I think I think we're open to that. It's just this particular, you know, some of the decisions they made like fake carriage, you know, carriage house doors where there were, where there weren't doors or adding brackets to this addition, which, you know, should, if anything, be sort of hierarchically less important than the main building. But the, the main building doesn't have brackets and so, you know, putting the brackets on it. So there were, there were a lot of decisions that I disagreed with, but I just wanted to clarify. If an applicant wants to come with a traditional style of architecture as an addition to an historic building, we don't have an objection to that.
That's correct. I mean, obviously you can't separate any of the historic styles from what people are constructing today. However, I think what Julie was trying to say is that there shouldn't be, it shouldn't mimic it as much to make it make someone question, oh, is this part of the original building? Not that it would happen in this case, but that if you mimic something so much that it's almost creating false history. If some people would want it to look exactly like the building, the same stucco, the same roof material, the same fenestrations, and that's what they don't like. The foe that we see on this is, as you talked about, those carriage doors, they're very foe. You know, so there's no question of that. But so those are kind of two separate things. But but absolutely, I mean, obviously, if someone wants to come up with a colonial style, someone wants to have something that has some federal detailing. You know, those are all things that are also relatable, but you wouldn't want to completely mimic it.
Right. And that applies to additions, new structures. It doesn't apply to the existing structure where the criteria are quite different. Do you want to get into that at all, Emily? Elizabeth?
So when we're talking, that would, that would probably Jerry be like when you're repairing something like the front porch. Obviously, the the HPC ordinance and the Secretary of Interiors talks about repairing or replacing the material in kind. So you wanted to go back to the way that was original, but not.
And that's the key, what you just said.
Yes.
Respect to the existing structure, yeah.
Because you're replacing what's there, not that you're creating something new that wasn't there to make it look like it was there.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So the board had a complete understanding.
Julie and then.
All right, just to David's point, yeah, I mean, actually, obviously applicants have the freedom to design whatever they choose. I think fundamentally, though, in historic districts, when it detracts from an historic structure, then that's where we have an issue, but it isn't anything specific. So and then Elizabeth outlined why specifically there were issues with this application. But I, to David's point, yeah, every applicant has the freedom to do whatever they want, you know? And then if it doesn't detract from the original structure.
Thanks. Thank you. Nat, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I'm gonna hold my comments for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on to the applicant, I just want to know from the rest of the staff if there's anything in particular that you want the the board to know. Or if not, we'll move on to Mr. Kennedy, Dan or Derek or Dan Dobremolsky. Dan Weissman, I see you activated your camera.
Yeah, I just wanted to say not at this time. I think there's plenty to go off of at this moment and as the applicant presents, I can question some of the items brought up in my memo.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll welcome Mr. Ryan Kennedy, attorney on behalf of the applicant and who will introduce his team.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said, Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee on behalf of the applicant. King Interesting, who controls both of the two lots that are part of this site plan application as Mr. Lesko and Chairwoman Capizoli from the HPC and your HPC officer. So I think you did a good job of explaining the nature of the application. I'll go to that in a second, but just I'll kind of want to explain why we're here, not to go directly to Mr. McGowan's question. But ultimately, in the land use process here, we had the HPC hearing. We ended up getting scheduled here tonight. Between noticing for that meeting and being here tonight, we got a lot of feedback, including some today. And I'll tell you just quite honestly, it's the intention of the applicant, if, as Mr. Lesko put in his memo, you know, the options really seem to be deny this, or there should be a significant redesign. It's the applicant's intention to redesign the project in a way that we think matches what HPC's comments that we received today do. And because we noticed for this meeting, we're here and we would like to take the board through particularly the site plan parts of the application. Because there are two components, one which did not strike the right chord initially with HPC, but in addition to a building that's frankly to create a conference room in an existing real estate office to that is at a lower level, literally to, you know, for ADA accessibility for the clients that are that are visiting that building. And a change that actually came up from discussions with staff. Mr. Lesko did a nice job of the long history of these two buildings, both when they were under control of the current owner and applicant. And before then, my role started, I guess, in 2018 with the addition to three thirty-eight. And then you may even remember a protracted trip back here for the garbage and generator enclosure design after that. And as part of those discussions with staff, with the idea of getting control of this corner property to connect the parking lots, to better address where the curb cuts are at three forty-two to create a safer situation or to kind of use them together, which kind of drove this. And then as part of that, we've got the kind of the small addition to the back of three forty-two and the site plan considerations. And what our intention is not to ask you to override HPC, not to go against their recommendations. But but for us to, because we're here, take you through what we had proposed and talk through briefly what we, now that we know the comments, what we kind of intend to do as a redesign to come back, you know, with either full plans or when we discuss with staff afterwards, perhaps if a concept makes sense, or if we can go right to full plans, you know, we're happy to work that out with staff. But the intention is 100% to respond to. And we, you know, quickly went through and think we can the comments that HPC gave us and, you know, now have in their their memo today. We do appreciate all of the thoughts of all the towns professionals, the volunteers on the HPC, you know, technically they're advisory to this board. We are not going to ask this board to be in the position to override their advice on the design of three forty-two, but ultimately it is this board's decision. We think you'll have a better time making decision once this is redesigned along the lines that HPC has has laid out. Again, that is our intent. A couple of other just kind of high notes, there were some from the site plan side of things. There were, excuse me, were some concerns raised about this being a cut through potentially or the one-way out onto Nassau, which ultimately we kind of agree with. So we're we'll show you that we propose to have to maintain both ingress egress on both sites and talk through what we think will help with the concern, which we're not as worried about, but we want to make sure everyone's comfortable, particularly professionals on the redesign, that this is not going to be a cut through opportunity. I think ironically, that that motion that you would be cutting off is probably the, not say the easiest one, but you'd be making that right-hand turn onto Nassau is one that functions quite well for those who are used to it. It's going across or making a left. So you ultimately you'd be cutting off a fairly easy movement with lots of internal movements and but we'll talk through that on the site plan side again. And as we told HPC, we are, you know, very comfortable with redesigning the front porch in a way that meets their expectations to try to utilize as many of the existing hornbeam shrubs or trees that are there. And in a way, particularly that meshes with some of the other professionals' concerns with it being a cut through, the more we can use, the less, you know, we want the site to continue to be navigable by users, but the more things that are there, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to stick with gravel, the less it seemed like some kind of cut-through speedway to cut around the corner. We don't think that would be the case, but the more of those trees we keep, the gravel, positioning the ADA space where we might put some electric chargers are all things that really will message to the world. You know, this is not a place to drive through, even if it made sense to cut that off, and we don't think it did. But having said that again, I just want to, you know, be absolutely clear and thank you know, the comments that we've now received from everyone and that, you know, that's our our goal, just to briefly show you the site area, what we were going to do and then talk through some basic ideas of how we can address it to come back with a excuse me, a redesign of the project. I, well, apologies, Chairman, I do see a hand up. I'm happy to yield if this board members have questions about this part or want to make a.
Yes, thank you, Alvin.
Essentially, what you're asking for tonight is a concept review. Correct?
Have we, are we going to not, we're going to withdraw an application and seek a separate application for a concept? No. Would we be showing what we've proposed and seeking input on it? Yes. You know, the difference with the concept is that it doesn't have to be engineered, you know, usually, and it's a different fee structure. We would very much like the opportunity to have feedback as HPC gave on what we had proposed, particularly the part that likely won't change, which is the site that's been fully engineered and submitted for approval. But if that also answers the question, I'm, we will not be putting the board in a position that we will be asking for you to approve the existing drawings. We recognize that they should be revised.
So our plan for tonight is to see your revised plans based on HPC and the other comments that you've received from the report and then we'll reschedule, we'll schedule a meeting for further down the road in order to continue this application.
Correct. And the only caveat is that while I wish for the particularly with the uncertainty with newspapers and notices that I, we could pick a date certain, I think that's probably unrealistic that we would, you know, essentially extend the MLUL clock and then once we've resubmitted, pick a new date and redos at that point.
Sure, Ms. Philip is already checking her calendar. Okay, thank you very much. With that, I think we can go on to swearing in your team.
Thank you. We have Jim Kamelak and I do see Tom as well, our architect and engineer planner this evening.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name. Jim, why don't we start with you?
Sure, James Kamelak, C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K.
Thank you.
And Tom?
Thomas Fantacon, F as in Frank, A-N-T-A-C-O-N-E.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, we do have a set of exhibits. Careful not to call them plans, but exhibits, you know, to show the existing project and some ideas about how we might address the the comments. And I believe it is twenty-one slides, if I could have that accepted and marked as our one exhibit tonight.
Yeah, that'd be A1.
Thank you so much.
And as usual, as you're going through the exhibit, the slides, can you please identify the slide number?
Absolutely. And before we start with the first one, I should have done this before I took over your screens, but Jim, if you could, I know you've been qualified before this board many times, but very briefly give the board the benefit of your credentials and licensing so I can have you accepted as an expert in engineering and planning.
Sure. Again, James Kamelak, a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Degree in the field of civil and environmental engineering, Rutgers University, and have been practicing civil site planning for over twenty-five years and have been before this board on many other applications similar to this here in Princeton.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Jim, I'll move on to slide two. This is Princeton's zoning map showing that that blue arrow points to the the two properties that we're talking about here tonight.
Yes, this just shows that we are in the RO residential office zone for these two particular lots.
Slide three, this is a clip of Princeton's HPC or historic map. I guess that purple Swiss cheese shading shows the Jug Town Historic District.
Yes, and this shows that the lot is located within that district, you know, essentially they're fully enclosing both lots.
Next to slide, apologies, slide four, this is a, an aerial photo generally showing the sites, but actually dated prior to the existing work. This is the newest one that's available by satellite, but maybe we just take the the board through the two, the two properties generally, just so they can understand.
All right, let's start with the subject property, three forty-two, which is located on the corner. As you can see, the building fronts on Nassau Street with the side gable end on Harrison Street. And that specific lot is accessed with an existing driveway apron that Ryan, perhaps you can highlight on the screen. In this particular location, which serves access to the gravel parking lot. As you can see from that configuration, the vehicle maneuverability is extremely limited in terms of drive aisles to exit. All of those parking stalls that basically line up along the the common property line there, you can see two vehicles. But I think there are seven total stalls that would be in alignment there, which, you know, there's a, there's an issue there with proximity of vehicles backing to that pedestrian sidewalk and with the potential of really getting too close or going over the sidewalk, for example. So one of the the main thrust of reconfiguring and connecting the parking lots is to solve to help solve this problem and shifting the driveway apron further to the north by approximately twenty-five feet would enable reorienting those parking stalls ninety degrees to the main entry drive and eliminating this, you know, particular movement situation that we have in this existing condition. And I do know that Mr. King was approached several, many years ago, when this three thirty-eight project was initiated and he did not yet own three forty-two and there was a a request to inquire with the owner of three forty, three forty-two, if she would entertain connecting the parking lots in order to achieve, you know, a better vehicle maneuvering arrangement connecting the two sites here. That was impossible, but he has since obviously purchased this property and now owns both. And the idea was to to connect the parking lots, address some of these these issues with with access and then also construct the conference room, which would add some open, open meeting space that the current building does not yet have. On three thirty-eight, in this view, you can see that it's accessed by the entry drive there on the right and proceeds to the rear. And pretty much in the existing condition, since those renovations were performed, we have the access driveway in the middle of that rear parking area with perpendicular parking, as you can see with those vehicles at the rear as well. So it's somewhat similar with that new addition since it's been constructed. And then this gives you a better vantage point from this looking west at both rear parking lots and the configuration of the buildings. Again, the three thirty-eight building here. This is the old addition, which was demolished and reconstructed. So this doesn't show the exact existing condition there, but you can see the parking arrangement at the rear of three thirty-eight. And then also notably, we have a three-story building, fourteen North Harrison, which is directly to the right in the immediate vicinity of the two subject properties. So this is a, basically what we had just discussed, a picture of the existing survey with existing three forty-two. And then, and then looking at the accesses and that single, the two-way ingress and egress, both on North Harrison as well as on Nassau Street, you know, for which ultimately, at this point, the owner and the applicant would be looking to maintain as much access as possible in a bidirectional manner.
As we go through these, if you can identify what slide that is, okay.
Apologies, slide six here, yep. All right, Jim, you want to go to the proposal?
Yeah.
Slide seven? Slide seven?
Sure, so here on slide seven, um as you can see, we have that one story addition for. The conference room space for the the office space inside of three forty two. It's located uh along that rear wall. Additionally, um. This also shows the reconfiguration of the parking with six stalls. At the rear of the property with that uh new curb cut there on North Harrison. Um also, uh the idea here with the the owner and applicant was to provide some outdoor space. Uh with that fountain element that was discussed. So that there could be some um pedestrian uh shared space uh outside of three thirty eight and three forty two. Uh currently, there is a stair going down three thirty eight towards that entry drive. Um that could lead across and provide some um some open space uh in that particular area. We did include on this um the sharing of. The accessible parking space between both lots because the parking demand is uh rather low. Um we felt that that could be. Uh shared, you know, with with easement precautions, um if this were to be approved, uh and we do show that on our plan. And uh also we show the, you know, maintaining that drive, that driveway that exists going out to Nassau. Uh which, you know, at this point, we'd like to see that um provide uh continue in its existing condition um with traffic in and out at that location. We did highlight on here in green a uh proposed historic preservation. Uh area that would encompass the front yard, the two side yards and uh the existing. Building uh of three forty two as highlighted here on slide seven.
I see Mr. Cohen has his hand up, and do you like to, do you have a question on this slide?
Yeah, uh um Jim. I know that the report indicated that the existing driveway is fourteen feet wide. Um for the three thirty eight property and that seems narrow for two way traffic. Uh have you given any thought, and it looks like you have some room to possibly widen that drive by a little bit. Have you given that any consideration with this new uh direction of of keeping it bidirectional?
Uh it is a possibility to to widen that. I would note that um. Really, at this point in time, in the past, prior to the. Um. Those renovations, when this property was rather uh intensely used by the Graves. Uh business and occupants that it it functioned in that same way, um and that. Curb that was installed followed the delineation of the existing pavement in that location. Um and we haven't seen any issues, you know, it did function that way up until this point and. Um it hasn't been an issue, you know, in the recent past, so um the the volume of traffic is relatively low. Um and then, you know, we have that existing curb cut that was maintained there at the street, so. You know, there is certainly uh a little bit of room if that were to be widened slightly, but then you would have to address that. Within the the right of way at the street.
Yeah, well, I'll I I don't have strong feelings about it based on your testimony, but let staff weigh in, obviously.
Uh Jim, going to slide eight, this I guess has a the before and after of three forty two, showing the kind of changes to the. Site plan there on the with the proposed addition.
Right, located at the rear, and I guess really the thrust of this is that addition is. Pretty much overlaid over that existing porch egress stair and um. You know, uh paver sidewalk area uh that currently exists.
I believe in this drawing, Jim, we were showing uh a a condenser unit for the for the HVAC, obviously with the redesign that would change anyway, but. Regardless that that would be moved to the interior internal uh part of the site, and there was even a a commit we made to to HBC, is that right?
Right, yeah, I think that can be moved over. Um. And then also, if you look at this orientation, that that addition is stepped back. Um if you compare the the edge of the rear facade of the existing building and the proposed. Um you know, certainly, there may be accommodations to make that step back. Um greater, I think right now the existing building is a foot and a half off the property line and. What was proposed was almost four feet or three point eight feet, um but I think we hear that. A greater setback from that right of way line uh would be desired, and it is going on an angle, so uh which is not. Orthogonal to the building, so it's a little deceiving. I just wanted to point out that, you know, it is stepped back, it's just that. That right of way line there is on an angle which is a bit atypical.
Um this might be a good place to to show it, but um uh it even in the current proposed configuration. Um the parking spaces that abut the new addition would likely be the best candidates for a uh. An EV charger or make ready situation because of the proximity to uh um to the building.
Yeah, that was the thought, maybe where that number ten is, the five and the ten, that particular stall. Um there might be the best spot for it.
Is that the handicaps parking space?
I would be right next to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You know, that there's always tricky to figure out which whether the ADA spaces should be EV only or accessible to them, and that would probably give us the the most opportunity for. A unofficial EV ADA space that, you know, the charger could reach the space, uh but not keep an ADA. User from the space if they didn't have an electric vehicle. And again, just to slide nine, this just shows, you know, that the addition was was over the uh patio that the Jim described. Um slide ten, I guess, has a bit of a blow up, we can talk a little bit, um uh though, based on the comments, we. Expect to hear already heard that the the internal sidewalk and and kind of plaza between the two buildings is perhaps. Uh not a not a warm reception, but Jim, maybe talk a little bit about what the intent was, um particularly. Um it was hard to see on the plans, but the idea for the fountain was actually a a flush. Installation and and not a not a raised.
Yeah, I think the thought was that it would be, you know, for occasional use and flush mounted to the ground. And the owner thought that, you know, having an outdoor space perhaps with several benches, et cetera, in that location, um. You know, could provide some amenities for the occupants of three forty two and three forty eight, um but you know, I think. Probably in the light of what was discussed, um we'll we'll take another look at that and and see how it might fit in with maybe some modifications to the. Uh to the proposed building.
Before we uh. Before we get to the architectural plans, uh Jim, um few other perhaps um just things to to touch on from the. Um uh from some of the professionals' reports before we leave, the you know, kind of general engineering testimony.
Um yeah, I guess, I guess I would just say that um in Mr. Weissman's report. There were sev- several comments, I mean, certainly, we want um to maintain the gravel surface, which was a theme and a design parameter for three thirty eight. Um suited to the historic context, but also from a stormwater management perspective, um sort of a more green. Element as opposed to uh a paving surface. Um there were some comments for providing concrete um parking bumpers. On three thirty eight uh in discussions with staff and what was ultimately approved is we provided striping on the on the uh. On the curb line to denote each of those parking stalls, and that's apparent and evident in the field. Um and we would look at doing that as well, just from a maintenance perspective with that gravel surface and to eliminate tripping hazards. We think that that's, you know, a better solution to um to locate those particular parking stalls. Uh we just see.
I'm gonna go back to slide six while you're talking, just that shows the full site plan up, I'm sorry, slide. Sorry, I made a slide seven that shows the revised um site plan while you're.
And we discussed um adding uh EV to one of the stalls, which we would do that. As part of the um. Modifying maybe that hardscaping area and the new addition, we'll look at integrating the bike canopy for which we did provide. Um here at the rear of the building and will also include that as well. Um there was some discussion as to um storage of the trash containers within the um. Chiller and the generator enclosure, um we will will provide some additional. Uh when we're back, uh information, follow up on that relative to, you know, proximity to the equipment. And the discussions um with the equipment provider, um as part of a modified plan. Uh there was a comment from Mr. Weissman about uh instead of having a a dry well type uh stormwater management. BMP of doing a p- pervious paver arrangement in the ADA parking stall area, and I think we'd be agreeable to that. Um to satisfy uh the drainage requirements for that.
Yeah, two two others in in my mind, maybe you could talk a little bit, I I think I hinted about it in the introduction, but some concern about the. Um uh people cutting off, I guess, this what would normally be a right turn movement from Harrison. Onto Nassau here around the building, but you know, wanting to cut through the parking lot, perhaps with the the stone and the interior. Elements and turns that would be needed, maybe talk a little bit about what your thoughts are, how how often or what 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 a level of. Interest there be in.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say that. Um. One of the concerns was the the hornbeam uh hedge that we have uh with those. Trees that were put in there um to function as a hedge with the. If we retake a look at that patio area and we can maintain some of those, um it'll it'll. Sort of um provide some visual extended privacy between the two properties that I think would um. You know, disturb a visual cue of uh possible cut through in that location. Um. So that's one thing that we can do. Also, too, I'm not necessarily uh. Convinced that vehicles would have the maneuverability in terms of queuing and waiting um at the traffic light. In order to have access to that um driveway apron to cut through. And it's really not going to save them much. If you go out to the site and you stand there. Um yeah, at least from my view, I I don't really see it as a significant um. You know, time saver when you're. Five or six vehicles from the traffic light, uh the of a need of a need to cut through in that location. Um and it's and it's pretty tight quarter, so if we can minimize the the visual expanse, I think that that would. Um serve to help that, but at least from our view, we don't see that as something, you know, significant that we have to be uh that concerned of at this point.
Yeah, one other one from my list, Jim, there were a few variances called out, and I'm gonna say they were technical, um but but um for this um. Parking area i- in in the.
Okay, yeah.
Property line, um one, could you maybe just talk a little bit about, you know, the parts from a from a setback and the landscaped. Area perspective was really only this tiny, and if I see if I can zoom in. Tiny corner that actually didn't satisfy the requirement, but that the rest of it actually. Did, but that perhaps we there's a solution to actually satisfy that.
Well, I think I think we are, we're still providing um a few feet for planting between the curb line and the rear property line where you're highlighting there on this. What what slide is this? Uh six, seven. Um but that is consistent with. What was installed on three thirty eight and what was approved on three thirty eight, if you move your hand down. There, you can see that we're basically extrapolating that and being consistent, um where this. The parking setback is here where the the aggregated um width of the three nine foot wide stalls actually uh. Touch the right of way line in that location, and that's why the relief was um zero at that spot. Though there is about three feet of clearance to the sidewalk between the vehicle. Or the edge of the parking area or the curb line and the back of the sidewalk at the side of that vehicle that could be planted. Um we could probably, you know, minimize this deviation by. Putting eight foot stalls, for example, in that location, which would be consistent with what was approved for three thirty eight. Um with slightly narrower stalls, and that would, you know, give a few more feet. Uh of buffer at that location, but still be able to get those three parking stalls in, so we could minimize that a little bit there.
Thank you, Jim. Um unless there's anything um that you had, Jim, uh from from your your notes of the plans you wanted to highlight, um uh I'd like. Certainly have our uh engineer available for questions from the board or your professionals at this point, yeah.
Okay, are there any questions, David? I see your hand.
Yeah, just to make sure I understood what uh. What Jim was saying about the um setback from the sidewalk, so it sounds like there's. Space that's currently paved because it's part of the.
It's all, it's all gravel, David, right up to the sidewalk.
Okay, but the sidewalk is about three feet from the property line.
Yeah, it's under that zero dot zero text, if Ryan highlights it there, that's.
Okay, so given that, um. If the municipality would grant permission to be planting in the right of way. Uh can I assume the applicant would be amenable to planting, to doing some buffer planting between the sidewalk? And the parking in that three foot area.
Yeah, that's why I highlighted that that little strip there, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I I that's what I thought you said, I just wanted to make sure I understood it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh any other questions for Mr. Schmellick from either board members or staff? No, not seeing any. Okay, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um um I'd like to uh uh Tom, if you could uh. Turn your camera on, I'm gonna advance the slides till we get to the architecture, but if you could briefly uh. Give the board the benefit of your credentials so I can have you uh accepted as an expert here tonight.
Sure, it's Tom Fantacon, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty one. I have a bachelor of architecture degree from Syracuse University, and I've testified numerous boards up and down the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you very much. We we uh accept your qualifications.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. So starting here on slide eleven, and I'll do my best to remember to to call out the numbers as we go through them, um. Uh could just briefly take the board through just from a from a physical use of this building, um you know, what. Goes on here and and what the idea was with this uh addition.
Sure, well, I think as everyone's familiar, that the addition is to the rear of the of the main house. It's five hundred and eighteen square feet, it's comprised predominantly of a conference room, a connecting link to the existing building. And a ADA accessible toilet room. The idea is that this part of the building is accessible. And we provided a toilet room there so that anyone accessing the site in a wheelchair or. Is uh disabled in any way, at least could use this portion of the building, it would be barrier free and accessible. The, so this part of the building is at the grade level, the house sits up about three feet from there. So in that foyer connection would be a set of stairs that would lead to the main house. But again, that's not barrier free, so at least the conference room and the toilet room that's there is barrier free and accessible. The as Jim mentioned before, the building is set back, but because the property line is on an angle. It does come fairly close to the sidewalk at the northern end. But it's still three to four feet away from the sidewalk there, where the main house is only, I think you said, be between a one foot and two feet. From the sidewalk, so there is there is a bit of a setback along that that way. And then to the western side of the building is that connecting plaza. The idea was to create sort of a community of buildings between three thirty eight and three forty two, so there'd be a sense of place here. Um and some kind of a an element that would bring people together and. Create sort of a unified appearance across both sites, so that's the reason for the fountain and the plaza. On that side.
And Tom, as as previously designed, while these look like um perhaps different. Layers or 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 elements, these were just different types of materials to visually on the same plane, create some interest, there was not. Different uh terrace store or raised parts of this uh was all the same level.
It's all on one level, yes.
So that moving to slot, oop, sorry, apologies. Excuse me, slide twelve, we can start talking, going through the um elevations of the original proposal.
Yeah, if you look at the bottom left there, you'll see the main house and then the addition to the right of it with a connecting link kind of between the two separating the two. Between the two separating the two, the two structures, um, the ridge line of this, of this concept. Is it about the, um, eve line of the main house? So, so that's kind of the way they relate to each other. Um. And then it's just blown up on the right hand side. You can see the window treatment because it's a taller first floor. Um, that's why we have the transom windows above the main, six over six windows. Um, and you can see the brackets on the one side, which. Um, I guess we would no longer be using, but kind of just shows. A little bit of detail on that side of the building where those folk, uh, carriage doors were.
Right into slide thirteen, this is the rear facing elevation.
Right, so you can see the faux carriage doors, you can see the, the fact that the, the ridge of the addition. Is it about the level of the eve of the main house? You can see the main house sort of ghosted behind it. Um, and the majority of the, of the building, the majority of the main house from this view is obstructed by the addition. Um, you see some of it to the left there, one window and then the other part over there. Um, and then to the right, you can see the, the residence piece. Uh, which is just a one story piece with a small, um, second floor. This is the view from three thirty eight. You, again, you can see the, the structure itself. Um, and then the connecting element that connects it back to the, to the main, uh, the main house.
So this, this door and entrance area to the addition, uh, lines up with that. Sidewalk kind of plaza area and then the rear entrance to the, uh, back portion of the three thirty eight building.
That's correct.
Well, um, so next on slide fifteen, uh, we've put a little bit of thought into, to, to. Perhaps how this could be done a, a little differently to, to start to think about accommodating some of the comments that we heard, you know, namely the. Um, the addition being, uh, perhaps not the right scale, not the, the right type of design treatment. Um, uh, you know, with perhaps mimicking rather than being, uh, mimicking a style rather than being its own, um, item. Uh, proximity to the street, um, and, uh, so Tom, maybe you can start talking us through what. What possible redesign we could, we could do here.
Sure, sure. So in this scheme on the right, we've relocated the conference room dramatically to the, to the left. So it's setback quite a bit now from the street. The connecting, uh, element, the, um, breeze way, I'll call it. Uh, is in that location between the building and you'll see in some elevations that we've treated that. Very open and, and with a lot of glazing, so that it, it just touches the main building. It doesn't. It doesn't detract from it in any way. Um, so. The, the. Elements are still there, the connecting breezeway. Uh, in this case, accessible from the three thirty eight side as the original scheme was. And then there's a toilet room sorted to the back of the breezeway. And then the conference room itself, which is the same size as the previous scheme, has been moved over. Um, so it's much further away from, uh, Harrison Street.
Slide sixteen.
Now, if you look at this slide on the left, that's the existing concept that we have. It's kind of a little hard to tell. You can see the main house kind of ghosted behind it. These, on the right is, is a new concept, and here you can see that. I would say a good portion of the main house, maybe three quarters of it are now visible from Harrison. So the addition is now reverential, I think, to the, to the main building. Um, you can see the, sort of the connecting glass element, uh, to the left. And then the conference room itself is another pavilion, so to speak. But because it's a smaller footprint, now the ridge of that. Piece is about the, um, sill line of the second floor windows. So that roof line has been brought down significantly, maybe six or seven feet from what is shown, what has originally been shown. The windows themselves in the new addition would be six over six, the way they are in the main house. Um, we've treated the addition in a more simple fa- fashion, sort of an early colonial fashion, which is. What the main house is, so there isn't a lot of adornment. It's very simple. Um, and we think that'll tie in much better with the, with the main structure. The, the view, um. From the, uh, three thirty eight side, you can see again, the left is a much larger element. Cause the footprint is larger, the ridge going much taller. And you can see on the right hand side, the new concept with the conference room is a smaller footprint. With this, with a shallower roof line and it gives much more breathing space to the main house for sure. And then the connecting element is predominantly glazed. So again, it's lightweight, it's, it's, um. It's a little bit more contemporary and feeling to sort of serve as a connection, a breezeway, uh, to the new conference room. And then this is view off Harrison, you can see pretty significantly here that the scheme on the right. Is a much more reduced mass. Um, it, it, it pays homage to the main house, if you will, so it's reverential to the main house. And then the connecting element is light and glassy, just touching the facade. Not slamming against it in any way, being respectful of it. Um, so we think it's, it's in many respects, this new concept, when it's just a concept at this point, it needs to be worked out in detail, but. We think that it addresses, you know, many, if not all, the concepts, uh, uh, all of the concerns that the HPC had for the original design.
All right, now. I guess with. With, with that, um, uh, Tom, thank you, um, happy to, to. Open up, uh, for questions or additional, um, uh. Feedback from the, the board to our architect. Um, I, I do have two other slides, but they're really about the variances and. Um, um, we, if, if it makes sense for us to list through what the variances we thought we needed, I, I don't know that it much will. Since we're not really going to be asking the board for them, uh, this evening, um, and perhaps we could. End here with our architect and use this as the, the time to, you know, again, to have him available for any questions about the. The type of response that, um, um, and guidance we'd be able to take into a, a redesign.
David?
Yeah, um. I wanted to ask a question. I think in the HPC report, there was. A fair amount of focus on demolition of an existing wall of the structure. And to be honest, I didn't see where that was happening, even in the original plan. But Tom, could you talk a little bit about? Where that was and if it's gone away with the new approach or, or if it's still being. Part of that, that wall is being demolished.
Well, it is, where, where the, uh, breezeway, I'll call it, connects to the main building. There was some demolition of that wall that would have to occur, but what I'm hoping is that with this new scheme, we can. Use the openings that currently exist there, the back door and that window to the right of it as openings now into this. Um, new facility, so that we wouldn't have to demolish. Much if any of that wall, the back wall of the building.
Okay. And, and I also just want to say, I, I really think the choice of siding. As the material for the conference room is, is a good decision, you know, to. Not be going with the stucco, but to be going with something that is consistent with the other addition.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to say that. That's exactly what I think HPC was looking for, something that was, was different than the main house. Again, to. To be reverential to the main house.
Right, Tom, maybe, apologies, I just want to fall for Tom before we leave that concept. I think the, the slide fifteen. Uh, shows the floor plan side by side. I guess you could probably see from here which, you know, the reduced part of the. Building that kind of touches and where the, where the connections would be that would result, I guess, in less partial demolition.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you. Um, I really appreciate the applicant coming through with a, um. A revised design, and I think that it was more thoughtfully done. Um, I appreciate the fact that the building actually is lowered, so they don't have that conflict with the height wall to. Make a larger fenestration to compensate for that space that they, they had that multi-plane pain transom. So I think that that really works out. Um. I was wondering if you could show on this drawing on the right, where actually that door opening is. And I'm just wondering why in this one you have two stair systems versus just the one. Because even though the conference room is remained the same, it seems like the foyer area is. Getting much larger and I'm, I'm just wondering, do you need that? Just wondering what that space might be used for that you didn't have before.
Well, there is another set of stairs there. Uh, Mr. King wanted us to look into the possibility of possibly bringing steps down to the basement level. So that's why there's that other set of stairs there. Yeah, so I mean, that, that foyer area could be reduced potentially. Um, maybe if a foot or two feet or something, and you know, those are things we'll look at when we really get into more of a detailed design.
And can you tell me where the existing door is that, that accesses that porch right now?
I think it's, um, about where that's one of those sets, the stairs are coming down.
Okay.
Right about there. I mean, we would locate it. In such a way that it could, it would hit where that door is.
Right, and I think that that's a great, that's what I was thinking also, that if you could use that, then you don't have to worry about demolition. Um, because if you look at this drawing, you can see how thick that was. It's like, probably like a foot.
I'd say. At least, at least.
I mean, look at that versus the, the, you know, the wing on the left side. So demolition that HPC was concerned about is, how was that going to be done through that wall? It's a timber frame building, um, you know, they didn't want that. To be opened up and then find out later, oh, you know, we've got some structural issues. That's why they were very concerned about. Having drawings and having that reviewed, so before anything happened. That it would be, um, you know, uh, any type of calculations and compensation would be done, but. Um, obviously this is concept, I'm not sure how it impacts the, the resident. Unit on the left side, but I believe that pulling it back, um, giving more space between the addition. And the right of way is a great idea. HPC had talked about that additional. Space between the new addition and the street was an excellent area to landscape. Without it just going around the building. Again, they felt that that's really not, um, historic landscape to do. That, that's really kind of like. Um, residential development landscaping, and that's, you know, not really. What they would like to see on this property. Um. And as far as the style goes, just so you know that the original house is actually a Georgian style, it's not colonial. But if you wanted to, I think that HPC would be open to. Your fenestration, which I think you have six over six, again, being a little bit different because they want to make sure it's not mimicking. Even the wing on the left, you know, that, that it is a new addition to everything that's being added to this building. But we appreciate you looking at this and, and making these changes. I think that this is an improvement.
Hmm, great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Justin? Yes, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, just a question for clarification, um, cause I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure when, when reading the plans. Is the intention to repaint the wing? White to match the rest of the building or would that stay the kind of gray, uh, on the clapboard siding as it is now?
The, the main house would be repainted back to kind of a soft yellow, off white kind of a color. And I would assume that we would, if, if the addition is clapboard siding, we would, we would match three thirty eight, which is also a sort of a soft yellow. And was that your question, sorry?
Uh, kinda, uh, basically all of the existing building would be repainted.
That's correct.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Is, uh, Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you. Um, just to kind of, um. Touch on the color, um, again, one of the comments that HPC had made is that three thirty eight. Is about a hundred years younger. And of a different style and they would. Think that you would want to give that building its own identity, that it didn't need to be clustered in the same color. Because they were owned by the same, um, property owner, um, and they understand why, and they. Appreciate that three forty two is going to change back to the color it was because. You know, for, for a long time, it united that nucleus, um, but. As far as three thirty eight goes, they would be interested in seeing if they want, if the applicant would want to paint that a different color. You know, which was more in keeping with that period.
Sorry, ju- just, uh, three thirty eight? The, the. To repaint three thirty eight?
Um, I, isn't that we were talking about that, that both buildings were going to be painted the same color?
Well, the new building is going to be painted to match three thirty eight.
Right, so both those buildings are going to be the same color.
Correct, but it would be three forty two that would be painted and three thirty eight would, would not be changed.
Oh, I see.
I think, I think Elizabeth's question may have been, is there an overriding need for both buildings to be the same color?
Right.
You know, can, can we consider, uh, repainting, since, uh, three forty two is going to be repainted, can we consider? Doing it in a color that will make it stand out a little more.
Got it, understood, okay.
Uh, board members or staff, any other comments, questions? No? All right. Well, um, I hope you have enough to, to go on, Mr. Kennedy and team. Uh, David?
So I know Ryan said they weren't going to ask us to. Approve this, but I sort of feel like we need to take action or, I mean. Uh, and now, so I'm, I'm happy to. Move that we deny the application if that's the appropriate thing, but.
Well, let me, maybe two comments. One, um, there are some members of the public here, and I, I don't know if it would be appropriate to, since they came out to. Uh, get their comments and feedback this evening, uh, so the board can hear and we can take back another resign. Um, and then I'll, I'll say to, from our perspective, I, I would, uh, if, if the inclination were to. Do that, I, I guess I would, I would prefer that we just asked to, uh, uh, adjourn to a future time so that we can resubmit documents and rather than. Um. Go through an entire compliance review, uh, you know, but, but it's often that, uh. Um, feedback results in revised plans as long as, and then those plans are submitted with enough time for staff to, to review them. Uh, for, in this case, you know, we would work out with staff where they would come back first, but ultimately. Uh, with the goal of coming back here with revised plans as part of the same application, um, but with, uh. Revised, um, elements of it.
Well, that's a, that's a lot of changes. And Ryan, I thought you, you, you said earlier where you said that was probably not a good idea.
And I, I did not say, well, well, all right, I, I didn't, if I said that, I did not mean to, um, and I one hundred percent do not want you to. Deny and, uh, uh, if, if that were going to be the, the plan for tonight, we would not have come here.
No, I mean, certainly an option. An option other than denying would be withdrawing. Um, the second option is just continuing it, but it's a lot of changes, um. For continuing with the same application. I think withdrawing the application would be the, the better option.
I, I, I don't. Know that I understand that it would be or, and, um. To repay the fees and we go through compliance review, uh, again, with something that is, uh, architecturally. Different is, is, um, happens quite a bit with, uh. Land use applications. Ultimately, this is a site plan, um, that happens to have a, a, a. An addition to it, and we would be revising the addition based on. Comments, uh, with almost no changes subsequently to the site plan application.
What about the, what, what's your intention with respect to the fountain?
To.
Would you keep the fountain or is that going to be changed?
There would be change. We would not, that sounds like no one wants to have the, the fountain.
Right.
Uh. Um, Mayor Frieder.
Is there any reason why we could not just let them? Come back with updated plans? I mean. Uh, unless there's a reason to absolutely not allow it, I don't know why we wouldn't. If in good faith, an applicant comes in front of the board. Says, I've heard all the staff concerns, I've heard the HPC concerns, and we're going to react to them and try to work with you. I don't know why we would. Make it more onerous than it needs to be, but I'm not the. I'm not the expert on the, on the law here, but I, and if somebody's trying to work with us, I think we would try to accept that.
What's the feeling? Um, Justin, what's your feeling?
Uh, I would agree with that. Uh, I think we can, uh, set a date certain. Um, receive plans before then, get any reports that we need.
um, receive plans before then, get any reports that we need out as staff. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, this is uh, an addition that they're looking to put it on an existing building and parking lot changes. If it was a, you know, hundred lot subdivision and they were changing everything, or if it was a, you know, they're building a mall and and had to change everything, um, then I might not feel this way, but I think for something like this, we could with some time, both for them to get the the redesign in, which it looks like they've done a significant amount of work. I'm actually very impressed by how much they've already done. Um, and then for staff to review it, I I think we would be able to do that.
Okay, but in terms of them going back to HPC, I think that was intended as part of the process, correct? Or?
I understood that also.
I I just don't know how exactly how that happens with continuing this application, giving them a date certain. I don't know if we know when HPC has time on their calendar. I I'm not trying to make trouble. I'm just trying to work out the kinks.
I I next, I'll just say that the zoning board next week will be seeing a very similar uh, not type of application, but uh cadence of HPC uh, significant, uh, much more significant redesign, frankly. Um, uh, and and returned to the zoning board of adjustment with the MLUL uh, extension that allowed for the redesign. Um, uh, as I I I prefer to to leave it to to staff how we would do it, and we would certainly consent to the longest period of time. Necessary and and if if we did not submit time plans in time for uh staff to review them uh without further extensions, that would be on us. And obviously, that would result in a in a denial from our lack of uh um either, you know, pursuit of it or or further extension. Um, and and I do, I appreciate the the um, offer of a date certain, and if we could do that would be great. Um, at the end of the day, if we have to renotice for this, um, I I certainly understand and kind of expect that that would probably be necessary once the other schedules are are figured out, rather than uh, putting your 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 staff through the effort of figuring out a date that might work for for everyone that far in in advance. So um, we would certainly consent to um, uh, an extension of the MLUL time period to review so that we could resubmit and then have um uh, scheduled with with new notice.
I think this, I think this must, uh, under our ordinances, go back to the HPC. Otherwise, you've had an amended application significantly amended. And under ordinances, you have to, we have to refer back to the HPC. Otherwise, we have a uh um ba- basically a recommendation by them to deny this uh uh, application, which is isn't even meaningful. I I don't, I think it's unavoidable going back to HPC.
Elizabeth, do you have a calendar?
Yes, so our next meeting is March seventeenth.
And do you have time available?
Um, I think that we could fit it on. We have a concept. We have a um a eating club application, and we might have the Princeton Nursery. But since this is a um an application where the report is done, it would just have to be amended and they're familiar with it. I'm going to defer to Julie since she approves the agenda and see what she thinks.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how that works with your timeframe, but.
I I I believe that the plans would have to be submitted ten days prior to that, which is about a week and a half. So I I I don't, uh, I mean, we've we've done a lot of work towards this, but I I I don't know that we would have a full revised site plan and and application back, uh, you know, and 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 plans back in a, you know, a week and a half, to be honest with you.
Well, I think we definitely have room in Octo- uh, sorry, April. Um.
And April is um, twenty first, this is the third Monday.
So it's the fourteenth, is that right?
Twenty first.
Twenty first, April twenty first.
Thank you. That that certainly would give us uh, and ultimately, if it um, that wasn't, you know, we didn't have the things in time for you to review them, we we understand that.
Okay.
That would be delayed.
We do have uh ten attendees and two people have their hands up. So but before I go to public comment, Carrie Phillips has her hand raised.
Thank you very much, uh, Vice Chair. Um, I just wanted to ask about the forty five day clock. If we get new plans, we should be given, staff should be given adequate time for them to be able to go through the additional uh engineering drawings to determine if anything's triggered like variances. Uh, I think that should also come into play when we're considering the date.
Again, no, no, no real disagreement here, to be honest with you. And I I we appreciate the the effort to pick specific dates, but we would be you know, understood that if if, you know, they they could be based on after our submission and 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 review time that the that staff deal feels is necessary. And then renoticing once that has occurred.
Wonderful.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, like to open the meeting for public comment at this time. Uh, we have two people with their hands raised, Don Denny and Julia Alashia. Uh, Carrie, if you can bring them over. I see Mr. Denny is here. Mr. Denny, can you activate your camera and uh take yourself off mute, please? There you go.
And
Jerry will swear.
Just worry, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn, um, if you could uh state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Donald Denny, D E N N Y, and I live at three thirty five Nassau Street. Um, just across the street uh from three three eight, um, number three four two, the subject uh property at the corner is uh kitty corner from me. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank uh the planning board for its careful consideration. I'd especially like to thank the Historic Preservation Commission for its careful consideration. I found the uh, notes uh and recommendations from Mr. Esco and Ms. Kim uh to be very revealing. Um, I appreciated the summary report from the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I've also reviewed the various documents submitted as part of the Historic Preservation Commission as well as the uh planning board application. Um, I appreciate, and I'm using this word too many times tonight, uh, I appreciate Mr. Kennedy's uh, lead of the proposed changes to the addition. Uh, but I do want to emphasize a few points that I don't think have gotten enough coverage tonight. There are a lot of requests for setback variances with this, and I'd like to see in any future project, um the elimination of those uh requests for setback uh variances to the greatest extent possible. Um, the second point that I'd make is we didn't discuss the redesign of the uh front entrance um, at all, um, which was one of the uh areas of recommendation against by Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I would like to uh understand that that's being withdrawn and that the entrance is being left as is. Um, and the final point is the movement of the entrance to the property at three forty two off of North Harrison Street, uh, which, uh, as mentioned, is being moved twenty eight, twenty seven feet north, I think, on Harrison Street. Um, we didn't hear tonight from the traffic consultant or or I'm sorry, traffic engineering report. Um, but I I would, reference was made to the potential negative effects of changes in direction um and access um with the changes on the driveway on Nassau Street, as well as the uh moved entrance off of Harrison Street. Um, I and many of my neighbors are very, very concerned uh with traffic congestion um, at the corner of Nassau and Harrison uh and the uh the huge violation of uh traffic ordinances with routine running of red lights uh and the danger that that um poses to pedestrians, especially children on their way to and from school. Thank you all for your consideration tonight.
Thank you very much. If I can uh address one issue that you brought up, I believe that uh the applicant has already agreed to uh replace the front, the front steps and and stoop with in kind rather than using the uh the flag, the the bluestone from the the existing patio in the back uh and aluminum railings. So I think that's one, one answer for you. And uh Mr. Anna Seki, we have not heard from you on the uh the proposed traffic uh changes with the uh ingress uh dual ingress egress at both corners. Do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, not really. Uh, I think the the applicant has agreed to reverse uh the movements back to two way. Uh, the literal sign, and I think uh they David brought it up is uh uh, the width of the of the driveway. And I think Jim also said they were going to look at it. Uh, fourteen feet might be uh, a little problematic. So maybe if they can get it to about sixteen, eighteen feet, you know, at least to the throat of it. Uh, other than that, I think that has addressed that concern. The main concern was the limiting uh the Nassau driveway to only egress. Um, so now it's two way. Uh, I think that's a lot better. Traffic is going to be distributed between the two driveways instead of having everybody going to Harrison. I think that's going to alleviate the concern that the resident has.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Uh, next we had a, we had uh
There's another Don Denny, so I'm not sure if it's uh, I'm going to go to Mr. Clifford Zink first, if that's okay.
Okay, we also had somebody else who was.
Yeah, Julia, and then she popped off, so I'm not sure how that happened.
We'll put her in in the queue. Uh, okay, um, Mr. Zink?
Okay, let me move him over. Okay.
With her.
If you can uh activate your camera and unmute yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Camera, start video.
There we go.
Can you see me now?
Yes, we can.
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear? Isn't that your left hand?
Uh, that is my left hand, yes. I was doing something else with my mouse. Go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do. Thank you.
State your full name and please spell your last name.
Uh, my name is Clifford uh Zink, Z I N K. I live on uh Aiken Avenue, just a few hundred feet from where this uh site is. I'd like to um say I fully support and I congratulate the staff and HPC in their very um, very good and astute uh review of this application. I should say that I have a um master's degree in historic preservation, just to um, qualify uh my testimony. Um, and uh I also want to congratulate the applicant, Mr. Kennedy representing the applicant for being very flexible and hearing concerns from the HPC, from the planning board and showing tonight um uh, some potential uh solutions to that. So it sounds to me like this is heading towards um a good uh resolution where um, the provisions of the Historic Preservation Commission will be um, addressed and also um some concerns about the egress, et cetera, and the setback will also be concerned uh addressed. If I could uh share my screen, I just want to show something quickly. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you that?
We'll mark that as Exhibit O one.
Okay, so now it's not showing my screen. Let's see.
The permissions are set up appropriately, Mr. Zink.
So we can't see it yet, right?
No.
No.
Let's try it again. Now it's not showing it. So what I wanted to show was uh some detail regarding um the rear wall, the north wall on the property, and um it sounds from uh Mr. Fanta Cone, if I pronounced that correctly, that um the applicant is going to try and work with the existing uh, opening, the door opening to the steps so that part of that wall does not have to be demolished. Uh, that's a stone wall. This old portion of the house, not the little section, but the big section is uh built of stone. The walls are eighteen inches thick. And they're basically rubble stone. So they're not like uh rectangular stone. It's easy to pull apart. But rather, it's very difficult to uh cut a big opening in the stone, and it would have uh, the potential to really be damaging to the building. So that's what the HPC was concerned about, and I just wanted to reiterate that. So um, thank, I'd like to thank everybody for um for paying attention to all the details and to the flexibility of uh the applicant to to do what looks like going to be a good resolution of this. Oh, and by the way, the glass addition. Well, I I think that that can be addressed.
You're over your three minutes.
Yeah, we'll do that at HPC.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much.
Okay, we have two people still with hands up, Catherine Knight and Maggie Deppenbrock.
I'm moving Catherine over now.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yeah, I reached out to Julia Mastek, Mastnak to see if we could help, but it looked like her screen might have you know, who knows? We can't help if her computer died. We can help if we could send her a new Zoom link or something like that. So um, I will let you know if she emails us back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Knight, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Catherine Knight, last name K N I G H T.
Thank you.
So I um live at three three five Nassau Street, so across from the project, I'm a neighbor. And I'm an archi- also an architect in town, and I want to, first of all, thank um the Justin Les- Lesko and Elizabeth Kim for their excellent reports, thorough reports, and careful review of the project. Um, we would like to welcome Bill King uh for upgrading his properties in the neighborhood. I appreciate it. He did a beautiful job at three three eight um Nassau Street and looking forward to what he's going to do at this corner property. But it is a very critical historic building in town, and it has to be done carefully. It has to be done right. And I'm feel like we're in good hands with the committee members in our town and the department members who are doing a careful job reviewing this. Um, and so I want to just mention for Save Jugstown that we all do feel it's very important for this site. And again, we appreciate the careful review and the fact that the applicant is taking the comments seriously and going back to the drawing board and making the uh the adjustments that they're proposing. So that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And
Ms. Deepen Brock is being a, she's joining us now.
Thank you very much. Ms. Deepen Brock, if you can activate your camera, please.
Yep, she's activated. If could you, if you could take yourself off mute. Uh, you're frozen. King.
Uh, here we go.
Where is she?
No picture yet.
Okay.
It's coming. Sorry about that.
That's right.
Took a while to promote me there. Sorry. There you go.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
So just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Uh, my full name is Margaret Deppenbrock, D E P E N B R O C K.
Thank you.
And I live at uh three thirty three Nassau Street, uh, which is um across the street from three thirty eight, um, next to three thirty five, so right in the um, the corner area there. Um, I really just want to join to echo many of my neighbors' comments um around um the great job by HPC as well as our uh our planner, Justin, on their thorough report. I also echo Kathy Knight's comments that um Mr. King did a excellent job, in my opinion, on three thirty eight. Um, and um, I'm uh very much appreciative of their willingness to consider the comments made by the HPC and the planning uh, the planning um department on uh relooking at their designs. But I did also just want to highlight um what Mr. Denny mentioned, and that is the traffic congestion in that um area. Um, I've been um, you know, reading up on recent uh news articles around the um monthly Princeton traffic um accidents and um instances with pedestrians and bikers alike. That is a um That is a um uh treacherous intersection. All you have to do is drive by the area and look at the trucks in the mud next to the Michael Graves architectural um building. Uh, it's trucks and cars regularly cannot make the turns, et cetera. So I would ask that when the new proposal gets presented, we just really pay attention to the traffic concerns. I'm not a hundred percent following what was shared, but I, I'll try to pay more attention when the new uh plan comes into fruition here a little bit. And I would also ask the planning board to consider other development. That is, uh, you know, ha- will be proposed or has been proposed or is um in that exact same area. And how um this is just additional flow into an already treacherous intersection. As a mom of three elementary kids, two who, which are um really wanting to walk to the middle school next year um with their friends, it's a, it's a big deal for me. And I, and I ask that you pay attention to the safety and the traffic congestion components. That's really all I said, but thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other hands up, I'm going to close public comment at this time. And uh, to sum up, I think that we've agreed that um the applicant will come back to HPC in April with a new, with a, an updated plan uh which will then be forwarded onto the planning board, and we will, uh, Justin.
Yes, I, I don't think we settled uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we settled on a month or a date. Um, but more of when they can submit their plans, we'll then schedule them, um, and they will have to renotice.
Okay.
Correct, and.
Does that sound correct, Ryan?
It does. And just again, for the record, we, uh, I believe the MLUL times out Monday on this, and we are consenting on the record to an extension uh beyond the April date, so that this can be scheduled uh for um, for planning after that and following review. If you need a date certain, I could make up one, uh, but uh happy to extend beyond that, um, you know, through the end of May, say.
Well, I know that the date of April twenty-first was mentioned for HPC. Do you want to pick a date after that for consideration for placement?
For, for a hearing date or for MLUL?
For um a hearing date, and that would also be the extension date?
Certainly, if, if there's things available, we'll happy to, the people that um from our end who would need to be there are, are on this call. So if, if, if that's possible, uh, we'll, we'll certainly take it.
Well, I'm just looking at the calendar. I'm just throwing things out there. Um, is that the direction you would like me to go at this time, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, the meeting's in May or May first and May fifteenth. Ryan, do you think you would be able to get things in for uh April on the HPC, April twenty-first, and then May first or May fifteenth?
Um, I do though, I think May fifteenth would be just at least to give us a few minutes to react to uh HPC's comments.
Okay.
I'm sorry, another thing to keep in mind is Hillier. Which times out at the end of May.
We could carry the meeting to May fifteenth, or the application to the May fifteenth meeting with an extension to May thirty-first, Ryan?
Certainly extend to the, I'm, 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 I'm following text about the availability of one of our professionals, that the fifteenth may, may, we may not be uh be traveling out of state. So uh with, I, I, again, I appreciate the attempt to save us a notice. Um, and, and we will consent to the May thirty-first for the MLUL, but perhaps um it may be beyond us to actually set a date this evening.
Okay, that, that's perfect.
I, we very much appreciate the, I think we, we were available May first, but I think it's unlikely that we would have the, it's a quick turnaround between HPC and, and, and plan.
Yep, so for the neighbors here tonight, they will be renoticed. Keep an eye out for that and keep an eye out for the municipal calendar if you're interested, um, both for the HPC and for the eventual planning board review of this.
And this, this application's being carried without date for the reasons we've given.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
David?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second that. Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Night.